I call to order this regular schedule, Board of Commissioners. Meeting, the first meeting of the new year. I welcome each and every one of you to this meeting. First of all, get rid of some business here. If you have your cell phones or any electronic devices, would you please turn them on silent, non-ring, or turn them off? Again, we welcome you to start this new year. Moving forward on this. Madam Clerk, you call the roll?
Commissioner Booker? Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner McKay?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Sampson?
Here.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Here.
Chairman Lyne?
Here. If we'd all please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The county attorney would lead us in prayer, please.
Please join me. Loving God, at the dawn of this new year, we pray that the abundance of your blessings would be known by all citizens of Craven County, our neighbors both near and far. Reflecting upon the holiday season just past, we pray for peace, we pray for joy, we pray for hope. We pray that your spirit of generosity, forgiveness, and kindness might remain with us always, and that we would extend to all Craven County citizens the grace we would hope to receive. As we look ahead to a new year that waits on the horizon, God, may we greet it with enthusiasm and a sense of purpose for your work in our world. Amen.
Amen. Okay, the first up on the agenda is to approve the agenda. I would like to make a motion that we table item 4A and 4B until the February 18th workshop at 11 o'clock. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Have a motion and a second. Have any discussions? Any discussions?
Mr. Chair?
Okay, all, sir.
I have an item that I'd like to...
That would be in consent, gentlemen?
Okay, you want me to do that then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Lyne?
Yes. And before I move on, if I could, if it'd be appropriate, manager, I'd like to call the sheriff and Mr. Pittman up to give them some guidance since we tabled there so they don't have to say if they don't request, require, or want to. Gentlemen, you heard what we've done. We've tabled your issues until the February 18th, 11 o'clock workshop. Some things I want to put out to you, and I'll open it up to the board if there's any more items that they may be looking for. But we'd like for you to bring forward a plan of action for your first year and your second and third year of what your priorities are, what those listings in priorities are, and what their cost associated with them, and what's the continuing cost for having them on that. We all understand that this will be a living document. It won't be held to you, but it'll give us an idea of what you're looking for and what you're planning on doing it. We'd also like to, what your immediate needs are right now, that should be in compliance with, I would think, probably your first year, if you didn't get them now, it should be the same priorities that you're looking for for your first year, but we want your immediate needs now tied into your first year budget, what you're looking for on that. Like to have a listing of all of your cars and sheriffs or deputies assigned to each of those cars, looking at that. And then, again, be prepared to discuss that, provide that to this board on the 18th of February at 11 o'clock during our work session. And if you don't feel that you can get all of this information by that time, please let the county manager know so we can work around it, and maybe if you just need it for the first year, you're still going to, you know, want to move on to the other one, give us enough time so we've got a decision-making on your issues that you've brought forward. Now, I'll open that up to any other, is there any other information this board would like to have from the sheriff to discuss at the workshop before we act on his requirements?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
My background is not in law enforcement, but in my previous career, I worked with law enforcement, which taught me, I don't know nearly as much about the terrain as I might think I did. When I worked on projects here on this end of the county, I spent a lot of time with New Bern Police Department, both on the ground and on ride-alongs. And I found that to be of utmost utility to really understand what the issues that were facing that particular entity was. Would it be possible between now and February to arrange ride-alongs for me, because I would certainly like to, and for any other commissioners who might be interested in doing so, to better understand the issues that Sheriff's Department is facing? That would make me a whole lot smarter in terms of evaluating what your request, what your needs, and what priorities are.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. That's, because we are requesting four-wheel-drive vehicles, one per shift, so we can get to certain areas of the county which we can't get to now, and, of course, Viper radios, which would provide us with the much-needed communications in certain parts of the county that we don't have. I'm going to be leaving y'all tonight with some USBs that has recordings of the VHF radios, which we currently use, and a Viper radio in the same locations to give you the comparison of the clarity. And I will provide that USB to each of you. So between now and the workshop on February 18th, you will have an idea of what we're talking about in regards to lack of communications in certain parts of our county. But I will extend to each of you, and I'd like a date that will work for each of you, or dates where I can have a deputy come by your house, pick you up, and if you would spend possibly a day and night shift with us to see some of the challenges that we're currently having in regards to parts of the county we can't get to in a timely manner, and the problems that we're having with communications that have been going on for years. So, but I also will answer any questions, but we will certainly be there. A lot of what Chairman, what you've asked for, we already have in part of our short-term and long-term goals that I've sat down and drilled down on for the month that I've been in office. So, but we will definitely have all that, and hopefully we'll have adequate time during the workshop to present all that.
You'll have the time.
Who do I send the dates to?
Ma'am.
Who do I send the dates to?
You can send them to me, or I will have, Captain Pittman will actually call out to each of you, if that will, and I will leave these USBs with, I can leave them with IT. So if anybody has any problem accessing them, everything they need is on each of them, and I have one for each of you.
I did have a time speak to some of the deputies down in the hollow areas.
Yes, sir.
And they go down to Adam Creek, they can get no reception at all. And I think those radio can be very significant for them guys down there.
They are, and it's a, it's a safety concern that I have for my officers. So, but I'm going to leave these with you, Dennis, if I can.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Chair.
Got one. Okay. I want to take a moment of chairman's privilege. We have a young gentleman in the audience who's going to be receiving an award, and I'd like to turn it at this time over to Commissioner Sampson. Commissioner Sampson, if you don't mind, please.
Yes, I'd just like to say this, my grandson, King Irvin, now, he had, he has had two instructors. One of the instructors is here, the other one could not make it tonight, but I have some introduction from the other one that I will read to you. So we're going to call little King and his first instructor up to make comments. You can bring your plaque with you. Bring your plaque.
Come on. He's standing there, can't even see him. Can the camera man see him?
Can't even see him. That's cool.
Hold it up in the air, like this.
Yeah, I'll turn around with...
Turn around to the camera, to the people.
Sure, would you like to give a little explanation of what he received?
You all right, King? You can turn around, turn back around now.
Well, I'm King, first instructor, Ronnie Levitt.
What's your name?
Oh, Donald Leighton.
And he is a veteran.
I'm a 26-year veteran of the United States Marine Corps. I was training King in Nahate Gojiru, Okinawan Kempo, WTF Taekwondo, kickboxing, American Kempo, so, and Hakaru Jiu-Jitsu, so, and any which way he would be able to, whether he was on the ground or standing up, he would be able to defend himself. So we basically started out with boxing.
How old was when the first started?
I think King was three.
Three?
Three.
Three years old.
Three, three going on. If you, oh, so he was four then, he held up four fingers. He said four, I think it was three. But he's...
He was turned four.
He, he, one thing about...
He was four when he started this one, in the other training.
He's, he was very disciplined.
Look up, King.
He did push-ups a lot. And, and one thing that I had instilled in, to always be prepared in, in life, in a type of situation come towards you, whether it is helping someone, or, or hand to defend someone, um, but, you know, that's basically it. He's a very good lad.
Well, we're very proud of you. Very proud of you.
All right, wait, King.
One citizen?
Wait, wait a minute, King. All right, we're going to introduce his other, the other school he went to. He, the, the school he's going to now is the New Bern School of Martial Arts, New Bern Basitou School of Martial Arts. We are a Christian-based martial arts and exercise center, training for kids and adults. We provide karate and self-defense training, group training, private training, security training, competition training, 623 Havelock Street, New Bern, North Carolina, 28562. For more information, contact karate instructors. Censill, Ronnie Levitt, black belt, 2526710089. Censill, Justin Hill, black belt, 25229, 2293429. Censill, David Harris, black belt, 2526347550. This is School, New Bern School of Martial Arts, a Christian school, and, and King is also a junior deacon in his church. Thank y'all very much, and I'm really proud, because King, he knows, I believe he knows more people than I do, because he speaks to everybody who go by the house. He go all out there to Warbucks, and he talking to people. He knows more, a lot more people. Him and his grandma, some alike, they know everybody.
Mr. Sampson, thank you very much, sir. You should be proud. All right, moving on, petition of citizen, please, Sheriff.
Mr. Chairman, we have one petitioner, and that is Glenn Fink with the CTA.
Yeah, Glenn Fink, 646 Goose Creek Road. What I, what I wanted to share this evening was related to last meeting, the Behavioral Health Budget Amendment that was approved. A big part of the discussion around that was related to when the federal funds stop, then the county is out. One, I appreciate the forward-looking of this, because typically federal funds stay in long enough to, to get you hooked, and then they're going to move on to try and entice something else. So it does shine a light on the federal government scam of bribing us with our own money, local governments and state governments alike. I know about 95,000 of that 265, I think it was initially, is really about salaries and overhead, associated overheads of somebody, an employee, that'll be hired. I just trust when the federal funds do stop that that, we have the fortitude to eliminate that position and not figure out a way to continue to carry it, if that's where the county is, county board is, on that particular function. And the whole purpose of this was to expand its role, to integrate behavioral health into primary care, and I see in Trillium's overheads, I didn't get a chance to spend a lot of time looking at things before the meeting tonight, they're all about expanding into primary care as well. I know that was that partnership discussion, but it feels like it's about growing market share. As I mentioned, that highlights a broader issue that I hope this board will consider figuring out and address, and it's a tough one. It's very challenging. We don't take, we don't take the federal dollars from Lenore or Jones. If we don't take them, then Lenore or Jones or one of the other counties around us will, right? Correct. So, and then, if North Carolina doesn't take them, then Virginia or South Carolina will take them. You know, what a web the federal government has weaved. We're like a fly in that web, waiting on that spider to come and eat us. And I'm asking, the thing that I'm asking is if this board will consider, I know we've got this Hunter County group, I'd really like this board to consider spending some time maybe working this issue. We are enslaved to the federal government on many issues, and, and no, no area gets supported or subsidized by another, though taxpayers of this area are the ones that fund federal, state, local. I mean, that's just the way it works, and I know you folks know that. But I'd ask that this group, when they get together with the Hunter County group, start looking at how we don't fight each other's counties, and that we look at how we might move to a place where we can even protect our state, that could include nullification. In many cases, what money we get from the federal government costs us more than we actually get from it, as, and, and I know that's untrue in many cases. So I just ask that we look at pursuing this with the Hunter County group, seeing if there can be some alignment, and I know it's super challenging. If I were sitting in your chair, I have no idea how I'd go about it. But I, I know this, if not you, who? And if not now, when? Because it's not going to get any better. And that's my comments.
Thank you, sir.
That's it.
No further?
No further.
Moving on, moving into the consent agenda. I understand that we have a request for the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask that item D be pulled and put into, on a departmental matter somewhere to, for discussion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussions? We'll do that one, just by voice vote, uh, voice vote, and then we'll approve the agenda. Anybody have any issues or any problems pulling 2D and moving it under number four, Department Matters number four, for discussion?
Good.
All right. Then we need a roll call vote to approve the consent agenda with item D being moved to four. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Lyne?
Yes. Okay, next on the list is Trillium Presentation, Health Resource Annual Report, Dave Peterson.
Good evening. Thank you for having me back this morning. I presented the Pitt County Commissioners' meeting and wanted to make sure that I went a little bit more in-depth on who we are to the new county commissioners, so I'll try to do that a little bit better this evening than I did this morning. But before I get into the presentation, I first want to thank Commissioner Scott Dacey, who served on our board for several years and has been very supportive of us, and also you all have appointed David Creach as another member of our board, and he's been also very supportive of both our Regional Advisory Board and our Governing Board. And, Mr. Chair, we're really glad that you are going to be coming towards, sitting on our Regional Advisory Board. We look forward to working with you.
Sir, thank you.
So, thank you. I also want to make sure folks know that Jean Kenovic, who's in the audience, who most of you know, is with Trillium also and has been working with us, and she does a wonderful job for folks in Craven County, so. So, our mission is transforming lives of people in need by providing ready access to quality care, and what I'm going to go through tonight is just some coverage changes, legislative changes, funding changes, partnership changes, some organizational changes that have been impacted by some legislation, and some county data at the very end. So we are a 26-county managed care organization. Back in 2001, they started this process of doing direct services in each county to moving those into providers. And we manage approximately 500 provider agencies that do services for mental health, developmental disabilities, and substance use services. Our total population is 1.4 million in the 26 counties, and we have about 205 Medicaid-eligible individuals that are eligible for services, but we serve about 54,000 individuals of those Medicaid-eligibles, okay? Our total budget spent on services was 355 million last year, and we range in size of counties. As you know, Terrell County is in our catchment area, and that's 3,800 people. And our largest county is New Hanover, which is about 225,000. We cover over 12,000 square miles in our 26 counties. This is a map of what we look like, and as you can see, in the northern region, the lighter color green, that's 10 counties, but it's only about 200,000 people. And in the central region, which I'm over, including Nash, all the way out to Dare County and including Craven, we have two and a half times the number of people in one less county. But what's even more interesting in our southern region, it's only seven counties, and they have 715,000 people. So if you think about the differences in the county sizes and, and what each county is needing to be, for services and supports for people with various disabilities, we have to adjust that, and that's what a lot of our regional folks do, like Jean, working in Craven County to support this county. So some of the coverage changes we've had, as you may have remembered, two years ago, Nash County was part of another managed care organization, and they decided to come over to Trillium. And so we added Nash County. Well, last year, Columbus County was in that same managed care organization that Nash was, and they decided to also join Trillium, because they did not feel that they were getting the services and supports they needed in those counties, and so they came to Trillium. We have been able, in Columbus County, to offer more provider options to individuals. We are opening up an office in Columbus County. Some of our largest providers, like Port, who you know in, in Craven County, and Integrated Family Services, are going to be having offices in Columbus County also. And we have done several requests for proposals for Columbus County to build up their network of mental health, developmental disabilities, and substance use services. Here's one I want to spend just a little bit of time on, okay? We've had some major legislative changes that have come down, and they've been talking about this for a couple of years, but if you're not familiar, there's what they call a standard plan and a tailored plan. And we're moving to a different waiver, an 1115 waiver. And basically, the best way to explain that this is supposed to be budget-neutral, as they move towards this, there are private insurance companies. So right now, for example, if Dave needs basic outpatient services, just medication management once a month for psychiatric issues, okay? That's pretty low-intensity services. Well, the standard plan is going to be managing those basic services from one of the insurance companies that the state selects, and there's eight applications, Blue Cross Blue Shield, Aetna, Carolina Compete Health, United Health Well Care, and so on. So they have eight applications, and in February, they're going to announce which parts of the state those private insurance companies are going to be awarded. And then, this timeframe talks about when that's going to be implemented, from only managing the basic mental health services of individuals on Medicaid, okay? Right now, we manage all of them on Medicaid. This is going to move over to the insurance companies, the basic benefits, all right? That's called the standard plan. And so with that timeframe, you'll see how they are moving from awarding it to the private insurance companies are then going to have to be contracting with the private, with the mental health agencies, and I use the example, in, in Craven County, Easter Seals is in this county, pretty, pretty big provider, they're going to be contracting, the private insurance company will most likely be contracting with Easter Seals to continue doing basic services for individuals, basic outpatient mental health services. That being said, if someone is needing a higher level of care, that's the tailored plan, where we, the managed care organization, who have been dealing with the severe and persistent mentally ill individuals for, for years and years, we will be the ones continuing to manage those individuals, okay? These will be implemented on a standard plan. The last date on here you see is February 2020, and then after that point, then we will be applying to the state to become one of the managed care organizations that, that manages the higher-level individuals on the tailored plan, okay? The good thing in statute, it does say that five to seven MCOs will be selected, and currently, across the state, there's seven managed care organizations, okay? We are, I'll, I'll say it this way, we're 100% positive that we will get awarded the contract to do that. I should say 99% positive that we'll get awarded, because we are one of the best MCOs in the state. We're also partnering with two other managed care organizations, Alliance and Vaya, which then, it's not a merger or anything like that, it's a partnership, so that they can see that together those three MCOs are 54 counties, and we are wanting to make sure that that voices is upfront with the private insurance companies on how to partner. So some of the funding changes, okay, since the standard plan will be run by insurance companies, they'll be managing part of those Medicaid dollars, all right? And then the tailored plan will be managing the higher-risk individuals on a per-member-per-month basis, like we are now, on a per-member-per-month. But right now, they take an average of the very low-risk individuals to the very high-risk and give us our per-member-per-month. That being said, if we're only managing the high-risk individuals, our per-member-per-month is going to go way up, okay? That rate has not been set yet. They have folks working on that rate so that we can get an appropriate amount of Medicaid dollars to serve those individuals. We are also... We are also shifting, and some of you may remember the old class-action lawsuits of Thomas S. and Willie M. back in the 80s and 90s, that we were treating the whole person then, not just the mental health issues. We were treating the physical side of the house. We will be managing the whole person of those individuals that follow, fall into the tailored plan, okay? And this, once again, this waiver is supposed to be cost-neutral to the state, okay? So I did mention the partnership changes with Alliance and Vaya. We have a website, it's called AdvancingNC Whole Health dot com. We want to make sure that we're taking the strengths of all three of us, three of the MCOs, and helping each other out in this entire transition. We then, once the insurance companies get selected in February, we'll be then trying to partner with those insurance companies to make sure that we have a solid communication line between the insurance companies and us. So with that being said, in dealing with the whole person, we are going to need to make sure that we're understanding the social determinants of health. And so we are making sure that we have staff that can take a look at the health side of the house, not the physical side of the house, not just the mental health, developmental disabilities, and substance use. We have to know that other piece of the pie of dealing with the health side of the house. So, we are going to be working closely with the county DSSs and health departments on that, because that is going to be a key role for us to partner with them on understanding the whole person. And we are hiring, right now, a couple of nurses to make sure that we are getting that education and linkage to the health side. I want to give an update on the opioid funding. We did get federal cures funds last year, and it was $3 million in cures funding. And we served 1,880 individuals with those funds, which is a little above $1,600 a person for treatment, okay? They also have, like Craven County, many counties are developing the opioid task force, which have been very helpful in the sense of trying to make sure the community is educated and addressing some of the treatment needs, which is an ongoing effort. I do want to, which is in your slide presentation, I do want to just talk briefly about the hurricane relief that has taken place with Trillium. As you know, like I said, we cover 26 counties. 12 of those counties were severely impacted, including Craven County. And I did come down to work in the food shelter here, and Jean and I made several trips around to different places in Craven County. And I had to go home and show my wife some of the pictures. I was, it was devastating. And so I really want to make sure that, I've been thinking a lot about the folks in Craven County through this. That being said, we had 3,000, or $30,000 in a donation page that was given for food, clothing, and hygiene. We had 4,000 care packages to shelters and our members. We had 1,500 comfort kits given to children. We had stocked 200 pantries with that, for our transition to community living individuals. We had 1,000 backpacks that were given to us from Cardinal Innovations, which is another managed care organization on the other end of the state. They gave us 1,000 backpacks, we delivered those to the schools. We have, we did get a Hope for NC, which was a FEMA grant, and those are helping folks connect to various resources. The sad part about it is, we are starting to try to do some estimates now. And we're seeing about a 2% to 4% increase in calls for, from adults that are needing mental health services in those counties. We're seeing about a 50% to 60% increase from parents for kids under 13 years old that are needing supports for mental health. We're seeing about a 35% to 45% increase for 13- to 18-year-olds needing mental health services because of the impact of the hurricane, all right? So, we really want to make sure that we're trying to support folks on that. Now, last slide is Craven County data. So every year, I run the numbers in each of the counties through our billable payments. And we, in Craven County, have served 4,292 individuals to break those down into each of the disability groups. We had 3,372 with a primary diagnosis of mental health. We had 1,010 with a primary diagnosis of substance use. And we had 540 with those with intellectual and developmental disabilities. If you add those numbers up, it does not equal 4,292, because some of these folks are duly diagnosed, okay? So, those are the numbers served in Craven County. And that is my presentation this evening.
Sir, thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
Yes, I have.
Sir.
I have a question. I know, when we're talking about the ones being served and talking about how we have the system set up, I was just thinking. I believe I remember the same, youngest one was about 13 that they were serving. I feel like we need to begin earlier, because once they get 13, they're about in adult category. It's going to take more money to help them. But if you catch them when they're about in kindergarten or younger, and start then checking them out before they even get on it or think about getting on it, train them, not staying off of it. Because we are, we are spending money after they're let out the gate. We need to stop them getting out the gate before they start. And I feel like we need to do that in the beginning, so that we can save, ooh, somebody, millions and millions of dollars. Don't wait till they almost destroy them, or it's going to take a lifetime to get them turn around.
Commissioner, I 100% agree, and I'll just give you a snippet. We have a service that just started about a year to two years ago called Child First, and it's an evidence-based practice. And we are doing it in Craven County, and it's for kids zero to five years old. And it's a licensed clinician, and, I'll use the term case manager, but no one likes me to use that term, two people going into the home to do a lot of what you're talking about in prevention. And so it's a fairly new service, and so we're really trying to make sure that we're addressing exactly that prevention side of the house.
I'd just like to give you another little input about the way we are doing these things, going into the home. Why not going into the school, the kindergartens, and younger people then start there? Because in the homes, sometimes the homes is, you can't get much done in some of the homes.
Yeah, yep.
But when they go out to school, we have more time available and more contact.
And we do offer school-based therapy, and so some of the schools have that in Craven County, yes.
Very few.
Yeah, yeah.
Need to constantly increase it. That's all.
Honesty, thank you. Man?
Yes, sir, I had two questions. You said that Trillium had utilized approximately $3 million to treat just under 1,900 people for opioid issues. I'm assuming that is not just in Craven County?
No.
That is over your entire area?
Yes, yep.
How many in Craven County?
1,012, is that the 1,010?
No, because that's all of the substance abuse services. For the opioid, I don't think we have broken it down per county, but I can see if I can get that number to you.
Okay, so the substance abuse on the other one would be everything from opioids to booze to?
Yes.
Whole spectrum, okay.
Yep.
I'd be curious to know what the numbers are for Craven. And the other question I had was, in terms of the Florence impact, you've seen a massive increase in requests for assistance, whether it be adults or minors with it. But we are only in the first few months of Florence recovery. I know the Red Cross looks at this, I'm going to assume other organizations do as well. What do you expect over the next six to 12 months in terms of individuals who need assistance?
Yeah, and Commissioner Mitchell, you're bringing up a good point. And we have seen this on a day-to-day, almost week-to-week basis with, one, our own staff, okay? That have been impacted by the storm, because we have an office in Wilmington also, and in Jacksonville. And so we've seen it internally and externally, it's going to hit folks at different times. And so, right now, those numbers that I gave you were our prediction of what the percentage that we're going to see occur. Some of them have already started, okay? And that being said, it is going to impact how services get out to individuals. But also, like one of the projects that we were awarded from the feds, it's also going to be having to do with educating folks on how to access. And Jean has been doing a lot of the work in Craven County and a couple other counties that have been trying to educate folks on where resources can be. And that's kind of her job on a daily basis. So that's what we want to make sure happens.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one more. I would like to know, after we finish treating these people, do we have a follow-up? After they left the program, you have a follow-up and see how they're getting along after they leave the program?
Yeah, there's a variety of types of services and at different levels. And the higher levels of services, a lot of times when they step down into a lower level of service, there's follow-up from that. And when you're at the very lowest level of service, the follow-up, I don't know if the follow-up is actually there in the lowest level, because that's just basic outpatient services. But at the higher levels, as you're moving down to lower levels of care, those do have follow-up to them.
Dave, I have a couple here for you.
Yes.
Actually, they're carryovers from last year. You assume that we're all on this board pretty smart. I can tell you I'm one, it's not, okay? I've been in the military for 30 years, and I still don't understand the ACW on the abbreviations and stuff. You did it on the back page, but on the previous pages, you didn't. If you put abbreviation, if you had put out in parentheses what the abbreviation means,
Yep.
so we can understand what you're saying and what you're going through. And I think the public would be a little bit better understanding as well.
Yep.
Because, I know this is my fifth briefing, and each time I look at that, some of these things are changing. And if you could follow up with us through the manager, or maybe when I make my next meeting with you all, an understanding and a briefing of what 1115 waiver is.
I can do that, yes, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, other than that, there's no further questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, where did you add item 2D from consent?
Next, we're bringing you up.
Me?
Yes, sir. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Department Matters. It's going to be item 2D that we took off the consent agenda, School Board Resolution Supporting Local Control of the School Calendar. We had a concern and a question on it, and I'll turn it over to Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. In reading over this resolution, and I just want to make sure that by our passage of this resolution, that we are supporting them having flexibility from the traditional calendar to the modified calendar, rather than a year-round calendar. I know there's a lot of parents, including myself, that do not support year-round, a year-round calendar. I think the comment's been made, one size does not fit all. I do not think the year-round school would fit, as I see it, for rural Craven County. And several things I'll point out through this resolution, just so, I know the board read over it, just so our citizens understand what the resolution says. It says, "The Resolution of the Craven County Board of Commissioners Supporting Local Control of School Calendars." I'm not going to read all of it, but several points out of it is that the current one-size-fits-all school calendar start date is no earlier than the Monday closest to August 26, and the end date is no later than the Friday closest to June 11. And then a little bit further down, another whereas, it says, "The second semester for high school starts two to three weeks later than community colleges and universities," which I think that is a concern by law folks. The next one talks about superintendent's report that calendar misalignment makes it nearly impossible for high school students or recent winter graduates to take courses at a nearby community college/university during the second semester, which is also a concern. A little further down, it talks about whereas long summer breaks can also negatively impact child nutrition as low-income children have access to regular meals at school through the free and reduced-price meal program, may not have access to regular meals at home. I do agree that it does have a negative impact. I think our school system has done a lot with the community's support of the backpacks that they do at a lot of number of churches, you know? And I think a number of this board has been involved in that. But by that comment, talking about, and giving the implication that long summer breaks, that raised a little concern of mine. And then if you go to the second page, the last whereas, it talks about restoring local control of school calendars, "Will allow local boards of education to best meet the calendar preferences of the families, educators, businesses, and our community while aligning for innovative experimental approaches to improve student achievement." Now, I do not think that the Board of Education would pass a year-round calendar for the whole county with having parental involvement, you know? But I want to be assured that that's not where we're leaning towards by them passing this resolution. If you look on their website for the last, I think, last year, maybe this year or both, maybe beyond that, they have always put up a proposed modified calendar in case the legislature was to do something. And that would put the start date for school at the 1st of August, rather than the traditional calendar, when we're starting now at the end of August on the 26th. So, I asked you that question, you may not have the answer to it, but do you have any background? Is that what they're solely after, is the modified calendar?
Well, sir, that's all the conversation I've had, it's been about the flexibility to try to, the points you made, to try to address those points. The wording of innovative experimental approaches obviously lends to more than just a modified, flexible calendar. So I would have some concern about that based on your comments. You know, I think, I think when you talk about school calendars, there's certainly two schools of thought on it. There's the traditionalists who think, you know, it needs to stay like it is, because it helps tourism in North Carolina with the way the calendar is now, starting later in August. It allows for the travel and the things that happen. And there's others that have the same points that are made in this resolution that deal with, how do you make up days? When you have a situation like we've had the last two years, which are a really bad winter, a hurricane. I mean, Hurricane Matthew, we dealt with the same thing in the western part of the county that we dealt with here. I would like to, because I can't answer you fully, I would like to, if you like me to, address these with Dr. Doyle and make sure I have a little, yes, and make sure I have a little bit better understanding of exactly what they look for. Because that would be a change that would need to be discussed further if it was a year-round type calendar.
Is that all right?
If it's all right with the rest of the board, then?
Is that all right with the board?
Yes.
Bring it back to the next meeting.
Do you need a motion to table it?
We don't need a motion to table, well, yeah, we do. We'd make a motion to table.
Summed up.
I'll say.
Having most, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, next on the list is Economic Development, our good friend Timothy Downs. Say that loosely.
Thank you, I appreciate the small amount of kindness there. Glad to be back for you again. Tonight, what we have is another step in the advancement, the development of the Craven County Industrial Park. I have to apologize, the narrative that was submitted, was actually submitted in 2018, and it said earlier this year, well, so, actually, last year, 2018, the Craven River Alliance purchased a piece of property from the county and paid $262,000 for the 13.1 acres. And the point of that purchase was for them to construct a shell building, a speculative shell building. Well, for any good shell building, any good project, you're going to have to have all the necessary utilities. And this part of the industrial park has some utilities, but not enough to serve an industrial facility. So, what we have tonight is a request to fund a small infrastructure project, and I'll get into the details in a second. But I do have an overhead presentation here to show you what we're talking about. So, general overview of the industrial park, the north half, which is where we see Moen and others, south half, which is where the large BSH facility is. We're talking about this sort of oddly-shaped parcel here. That's the parcel that this Craven River Alliance purchased. Little closer-up view, just as reference, you can see here on the overhead, Executive Parkway runs here, that was completed last year with some funds from the county and from the state, and then also this new road was built here. So, again, the parcel that we're talking about, excuse me, went too far, is this one here. Now, currently, the infrastructure ends right here where Executive Parkway ended prior to our project last year. So, there is sanitary sewer infrastructure here and water infrastructure here. And so, now, this map is, the orientation has changed slightly, but you can see in the bottom right here, which is where this building is going to be built. And again, if you follow the orientation, the infrastructure that is in place ends right here. We discussed at length with folks that are very familiar with our park, and the Craven River Alliance Product Development Committee, as well as staff here at the county, on what was the best method to serve this potential next user at this shell project. In the midst of that, we were also approached by another potential end user, not for shell building, but for the additional property that's here at the top of the page. So, that got us talking about, well, the infrastructure would then need to be carried a little bit further to be able to serve that. So, where we are today, we have a proposal to take the existing infrastructure that, again, ends at the, what was the former end of Executive Parkway, and this is Piedmont Natural Gas, here on the south side, and extend it by about 450 feet. And what this will do for us is it will provide service to this shell project, but it will also provide service to this parcel, should that deal come to fruition. And I say that deal, the person wants to buy four and a half acres here and build probably another 30,000-square-foot facility. So, the infrastructure that we're talking about is designed to serve, again, the shell building that the Craven River Alliance is planning to build, and is actually underway right now, as well as a potential future user here. And that's it, it doesn't go any further than that. And again, if we developed further out into this part of the park, we'd have to talk about additional infrastructure. But right now, we're just simply talking about an additional 450 feet of sewer and about 360 feet of water. The sizing of this infrastructure was discussed at length, and both of these facilities, the one that's planned by the C-1A and the one that's potential by this additional user, are not heavy-water, heavy-sewer users. So, it's designed to be just enough to serve these buildings and the sizes that they are, with some expansion in the future, but not any heavy-water or sewer users, which you might get from, you know, food production outfit, or some other chemical, something like that. They are designed, the infrastructure is designed to simply serve a standard user, standard industrial user. So, now, some of you had the conversation last fall about what to do with the funds that came from the sale of the 13.1 acres to the C-1A. And what was discussed at that point was reserving some of those funds to be able to pay for this infrastructure project. Since then, we've also submitted a request to Duke, and they have awarded an additional $25,000 to, I shouldn't say additional, they've awarded $25,000 to the community, and I'll explain that in a second, to do this project, to provide infrastructure. They have what's called the Community Investment, excuse me, the Carolinas Investment Fund. They provide smaller grants in the neighborhood of $25,000 to do these sorts of smaller projects, typically one per county. And we have been awarded that money, and I believe it is, and the check is in the mail. So, the overall project cost is about $120,000, just over $120,000. And we have gone through the process of soliciting proposals and quotes. Unfortunately, the type of this, the type of work that this project would entail, as well as the size of the project, doesn't, wouldn't attract large companies. But we have worked with this company here in Craven County, they've done a good workforce before, and they've done their work to solicit multiple quotes from the component parts, like engineering and construction and those sorts of things. So, we've discussed it internally and agree that the process that was followed in order to receive this proposal and then carry out the contract meets the requirements of open contracting. So, again, the contract that's in front of you, the proposal that's in front of you is for $120,000. And the contractor is Tar Hill Building Systems. They would simply be a general contractor, they will hire out the engineering, they will hire out the construction. And again, it's two components, one for water, one for sewer. When this is all said and done, we'll have infrastructure to serve not only the C-1A spec building, but also a potential next user on that four and a half acres. I threw a lot at you, I'll stop and wait for questions.
Do you have a motion?
I'd make a motion.
You have a motion in a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Any comments? Roll call vote?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Lyon?
Yes.
Thank you. Allow me one question. Jack, do we need to discuss the budget amendment at this point? Is that, is someone else handling that?
Budget amendment is in the agenda, right?
Right. Not to exceed $125,000.
Just so you know, that is part of this package as well.
The only reason it's $125,000, because the actual bid cost is 120.
Right.
125, 20, instead of coming back, we've got money in there, not to exceed the 125,000. So, gives them, there, it shouldn't be that, we're not going to, coming out of your money, we'll come for you.
You know where to find me.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jack, you want to, all right, we got Timothy up here, you want to make the announcement?
Yes. He goes scared. He doesn't bad.
So, this is sort of the passing-of-the-torch moment here. Timothy just wrapped up that item, and I'm pleased to announce, we have someone in attendance tonight, and very happiest here, his name is Jeff Wood. And Jeff, you'll step forward. Jeff is the new Craven County Economic Development Director. He will be taking the reins from Timothy. As I announced about a month ago, Jeff was selected in a nationwide search that we did here. He comes to us from West Virginia, where he was the Director of Economic Development for the West Virginia National Guard, Charleston, West Virginia. Before that, Jeff's also been in Florence, South Carolina, working for the Florence County Economic Development Partnership, and also worked with the West Virginia Division of Energy and Mid-Atlantic Technology Research Innovation Center, or Matriq, in Charleston, West Virginia. He is also our newest homeowner in Craven County, and we're really pleased with that. We put him on the tax rolls first, before he starts on Wednesday. So, but we're really pleased, he's here, he's coming with his wife, and I know they're, spoke with them today, they're real excited to learn about our community and our county and get to work. So, Jeff, if you want to say a couple words, feel free.
I won't take up too much of your time, I can tell you, my wife's a happy camper, wife's Jennifer. We're excited to be here. Several years ago, we traveled through New Bern for the first time, and fell in love a long time ago. And so, when this opportunity came, I had to compete, and to show you that everything happens for a reason. Two weeks before, Jack called me to offer me the job, my wife was offered a job to where she would be able to work anywhere in the southeast for IHG. And so, New Bern was the place that we needed to be. So, extremely excited to be here. I've learned over 20 years' experience in economic development, it has nothing to do with the economic developer as much as it does the community that you work for and the people you work for. And I'm very excited to be a part of Team Craven. And any questions, I'll probably have to answer them next month or next meeting, but I can, I'll do my best.
The only thing I will say, welcome aboard. I got one of my mayors here, he wants some economic development in the western of our county, so make sure you meet him.
You can do that.
So, welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Mr. Chair, that was all I had on my county manager report for the night, except to, just to confirm, you said February 18 at 11:00 a.m. for the work session?
I have on my calendar.
Okay. And I just, instead of me coming back up, I just want to make sure, were there any other items you'd like to cover during that work session?
Yes, we're going to have that during the commissioner's brief.
You're going to, you're going to deal with that, okay?
Yes.
All right, well, Jeff, welcome aboard, and...
Yes, I have it at 18, right after our morning meeting. And that's probably be 11 o'clock. So, the county attorney, county manager report, I don't need to call you back up, all right? Moving on, going into appointments, I think everyone can see and hear of what's coming up and what's pending. To go through that, what we got on the plate tonight, I think we're still waiting for Craven County Board of Adjustments, we have one. Nan, we have any word on that?
Not from Commissioner Wood, he's the one that's working.
He has, I'm sorry, Nan, he talked to me right before he left, he has a person, he's just trying to confirm whether they live in the right area, and we're working on that. So, hopefully by next meeting, we'll have a name for you.
All right, next on the agenda is appointments, the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council have one nomination, Eric Queen seeks appointment to that seat. We've had one individual who's resigned, he had to move out of the area due to the storm. There's no other nominations, no other objections, or no objections, we'll appoint him by acclamation. Okay, Eric Queen's pointed to the crime prevention, juvenile crime prevention. Craven County Planning Board, Drew Willis, term expired January 30, early appointed in 1996, he seeks reappointment, however, we've got three applicants on file. Any...
Mr. Chair, can I comment on that one?
Yes, sir.
I did some research and spoke with Commissioner Mitchell, this was an appointment by Scott Dacey, and the way the planning board is, they're by district, each commissioner has an appointment, so I've spoken with Commissioner Mitchell, and these three individuals that are here are not in her district.
Okay.
Okay, they are from District 1, 3, and 7, I believe. So, just to be clear, this would be the representative of District 4. Just Commissioner Mitchell, can I?
And I have a couple of people in mind, but I've spoken to one of them, and these three applications came in. If it be possible, Mr. Chair, I'd like to wait, table this until I have more chance to talk to people in this area. It's been difficult to get in touch with people from my ward during the holidays.
Not a problem, table on that. Next is the Voluntary Agricultural District, Dale Dawson and Jackie Anderson's terms expire the end of the month, both were religiously appointed in April of 2009, they both seek reappointment, per Mike Carroll.
Ms. Chairman, I would ask that both of these gentlemen be reappointed, both of them have been active on this voluntary ag district, and it is hard to find folks to serve on this board, so I'd ask for their reappointments.
Any objections from anybody on the board? If so, by acclamation, so moved. We have one other appointment to make. You were given a piece of paper, our applications this afternoon, when you came in for the meeting. Scott Dacey has resigned his position on the Regional Airport Authority. We have two nominations, that's been turned in. We've also had a letter from the airport board recommending one of those individuals, but we've got two nominations, I'm open for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Tyler Harris for the Coastal Regional Airport Authority.
Have a motion for Tyler Harris, may I have a second?
I'll second that.
Have a motion in a second, any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that closes that appointments. County Attorney, uh... County Attorney's report?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I have two matters for your consideration this evening. Both involve the potential sale of county-owned real estate. Item 1 is a final acceptance of an offer to purchase real property. Parcel number 1, 044-295, there is no stated street address. This was acquired through a tax foreclosure. We initially received a bid in the amount of $1,500. That bid was subsequently upset to the amount of $2,500, which remained the last and highest bid after the upset bid process. You will note that the county's out-of-pocket cost for the initial tax foreclosure and unpaid taxes was 28, 48, 47, and the current tax value is just over $6,000. It is our recommendation that the board give final approval to this sale, so we can collect the sales proceeds and get the property back on the tax rolls.
No moves.
Second.
Motion in a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Sir.
If I may?
Yes, sir.
I have not had time to, I forgot it until we got to this point. I just want to state for the record, and I don't know how you want to handle it, the gentleman that is purchasing this property, that has put in a bid for it, is my wife's cousin. He's not my cousin, but he's my wife's cousin. So, is that a conflict of interest?
It's technically not, but we like to run a clean ship here, and I know you guys do as well, so I might suggest that we have a motion and vote, just to excuse you from considering this matter and voting upon it.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussions? Roll call?
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell? Yes. Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Lyon?
Yes. So...
Then I think you need a separate vote on the actual motion to sell the property.
We have a motion, and we have a second to sell the property at the $2,500, vote?
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell? Yes. Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yep.
Chairman Lyon?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. Item 2 is an initial offer to purchase real estate, the tax parcel number is 1044-263. As with the prior parcel, there is no assigned street address. Our bid amount was $2,500, it was a tax foreclosure with the past due taxes and the cost of collection coming in at $2,532 and change, and we've got a current tax value of $13,500. If the board is inclined to accept this offer, we'll put it through the advertisement and upset bid process, and the matter will come back before the board for final approval, you know, say sometime in February or March, depending on how the process goes.
This is the first bid?
Yes, sir.
And this does not meet our new standards of 25%, is that correct, manager? I thought we set up that we, you know, we wanted at least 25%.
I think it was, I think that was a...
It was a New Bern issue, but we were tagging along, I thought.
I think you considered it based on the value of the property and the other factors with this. I mean, having no assigned street address means it has no access, probably. Probably it's butts a neighboring property, which means it's only valuable to a certain number of people in the world. So, some of these are, you get kind of, is it worth putting it back on the books or holding it until someone else may want it?
Okay, what's the desire of the board? Okay, what's the desire of the board?
I would make a motion to accept it.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners' report. Okay, Commissioner McCabe?
Yeah, I don't have too much to say, just that, um, we all had wonderful Christmases this year, 2018, and a happy new year. I just want everybody to, in 2019, we all need to put our hearts together and start loving one another, and start fighting, and, and working for the people in our counties, and pray that 2019 will be a good year, that we not have no more storms, could have hurt a lot of people in 2018. So just pray and keep God in your heart, and try to be good to everybody, because you never know, you need somebody to help on the road. Like my father always say, the only time you look down on somebody, when you helping them up. So no matter how good you are, how much money you got, it don't mean nothing. Because God will descend, if you don't own nothing but your heart. So let's be good for 2019, and have a prosperous new year, and God bless each and every one you are here, and through the county, and through United States. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes, I'd like to say that, uh, knowing the storm as bad as the storm was, and how many people lost, just about everything they had, I can still see a blessing. How people come together and work together without, seemed like any animosity. They were just interested in helping a person, no matter who they are, where they come from. And I know we had a lot of volunteers come into the county, and I know we had one, I know from Seattle, Washington, come in and helped out, and our staff was, they was really outstanding, they did an outstanding job, and overtime, and time that didn't even have for the family, they still worked for the county. And I, that was a great work, because I, and I really appreciate it very much. And I just saw, I saw one bad mark in what went on in the storm, and after the people began to try to restore their lives, I could see a lot of bad stuff going on with the insurance company, Insurance of Justice, and also finding carpenters and other people that need electricians. It's hard to see people sometimes, well, right now, some people still don't have nowhere to go. And I, I just hope that we continue on in this love, love fest, that we will continue to look out for those people who not able to look out for themselves. And also, heard some news about some people being without proof stamps and checks during this period of time, and I hope our love continue to fester, and continue to make people available to them to help those people who cannot help themselves. No telling when something may happen to each of us, no matter what, how much money you have, no matter where you live at, I tell you, tragedies can meet you. And we need to always think about those who cannot help themselves. And I, I'm just so concerned also about our young people and this drug problem, and how bad this got. And we got to join in together to try to stop the flow of drugs in our communities. We got to work together, we got to sacrifice together, because the one child is lost, you don't never know when it's gonna come to your child being lost. So I'm just praying and hoping that we will continue to work together to make this one of the greatest counties in the 100 counties, and in the world. We can do it, because we have the support of most of the people. Majority of the people in this county, I believe, have love one for another. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Jones?
Mr. Chairman, I got several things tonight, if you allow, for the time. First, I, I do want to recognize with us tonight, Mayor of Dover, Mr. John Wellington, and one of our aldermen up there, Mr. Mitchell. Appreciate what both of them do, and thank you for coming here this evening. Several things to share with the board. First, Commissioner Mark and myself, and he might also comment on it, are going to be sponsoring a meeting for the citizens that live there in western and northwestern Craven County to discuss the possible closure of a portion of Nelson Road. That is between River Road and Maple Cypress Road. It falls kinda in, between both of our districts, and so we're joining together. DOT is gonna come out and show their plans. This meeting's gonna be held on January the 15th, at the Fort Bommel Fire Department at 7:00 PM. What about this that I think this board needs to be advised about is that DOT will want to come to this board and ask for us to sign off on the closure of this portion of road. We've been dealing with this now for some time, Commissioner Mark and myself, and while he served as chairman, and meeting with DOT on several occasions. Concern that I have about it is that there have been several lives lost at this intersection, but, and, and shouldn't be a but with that, I mean, we, we're all concerned about that and take that into great consideration. The community though, that has came to me and voiced their opinions about it, has not expressed their support of this plan. And so that's why we asked DOT to come and to advise and let folks see the picture of what's gonna be done. Also at this meeting, we're hoping, I talked to Chad Strong this afternoon, we have not got a commitment yet, but we're hopeful that DOT will also give an update on the Maple Cypress Bridge project. So anyway, we do extend the invitation to any of the other board members that have time to attend. We all will have to vote on this at one particular time if DOT decides to move forward with it. And, but if not, Commissioner Mark and myself will be able to advise the board of what the citizens' desires are. So again, that's January the 15th, 7:00 PM, Fort Bommel Fire Department. Next thing I just want to mention to the board, and due to the time, another item that I've got, I won't go into great detail, but a lot of folks there in the rural part of our county, in western Craven County, is having a tremendous problem with internet service for CenturyLink. A portion of our communities out there do not have CenturyLink, it comes to a certain part of the rural area and stops. We have asked that it be extended for some time, but they have not shown an interest at the present time to do so. I bring it up to you because I've had several citizens that have moved in the area in recent weeks, that have tried to get CenturyLink internet, and they've been turned down, being told that they're not taking on new customers. And so the only other option for many in the rural part is to go to an expensive alternative of doing the satellite and so forth. With mine, and, and we have this conversation a lot with county staff, half the time I can't get, I don't get cellphone service too good, but I sure can't get internet service. We, we do not have it adequately. Something that I don't know, we can have some discussions, I don't know whether we have any influence at all on CenturyLink and going forward, or can encourage CenturyLink maybe to move out, but it's something of great concern to the rural citizens of our county. Next item, Mr. Chairman, Chairman Mark, when he was serving as chairman, appointed a steering committee for the Craven County Animal Control. Commissioner Tyson and myself were appointed as co-chairs of this steering committee. And we will come back with a more detailed recommendations from this committee, but I just want to share several things that were discussed amongst other things, but seven items that, that were discussed amongst all of these diverse group of people that served, and I appreciate their service. Number one, there was recommendations that the shelter would possibly be looked at being closed one day a week, and then opened later in the afternoons, and then on Saturdays to accommodate working families. Two, it was suggested about volunteer coordination to organize additional volunteers for the shelter. Three, to promote adoptions with a better presence on Facebook, website, and media outlets. I was glad to see this week that they did have a portion in the Sun Journal, I think that was a good spotlight. Number four, to allow adoption process to be non-complicated. Number five, to advocate that all animals that are adopted be spayed and neutered. Six, to accept grants, donations to a fund, affordable spay and neuter program for the county. And seven, to promote vouchers for the spay and neuter program. A lot of different opinions about, you know, what to do. But having said that, there were a lot of good comments that came out, I think, out of these meetings. We were very fortunate in these meetings that we had, to have the sheriff who did attend every one of them, and who offered a lot of insight into it. And I, I want to first say to the sheriff, I commend you for what you've already been doing on the investigations with the animal cruelty investigator that you've got there in your department. May not call it exactly that, but I think they're already going out and doing a lot of the things that we've advocated for, and if I could, if the chairman of board allow, I'd like for him to just address that, if you would allow. Yes. If you don't, if you don't mind, Sheriff.
Yes.
Yeah, one of the first things I did, you know, not only during my meetings over the past six years with people in our communities in regards to the lack of enforcement in, for animal cruelty and neglect, that was a pledge I made to our communities and constituents that we, if elected, I would actively go after these folks that feel like it's alright to abuse and neglect animals in this county, which has been going on for quite some time and unchecked. Also, you know, I'm, I'm too am glad to see that they are doing something about adoption, because for the longest time, the animal shelter has not been actively promoting adoption like some of the other nonprofits in the area are doing. But my commitment is to work very closely with them, and I did name a dedicated animal cruelty investigator in my office, and that's someone that is well-trained. It was a talent that was not being tapped into, and he did not need additional training. It's training that he had took upon himself to move forward with this, and I'm glad he did, because now he is up and running, he's making cases. We are working closely with the animal shelter, but in regards to animal control, we could be doing a lot better. We have two entities that are working sometimes side by side, but not knowing what the other one is doing. So at any time, if the board sees fit, my office is willing to take in the animal control portion of it, for the purposes of being more fluid and giving our citizens a better level of service in regards to the animal control portion, particularly in regards to enforcement of the animal cruelty and neglect portion. So I offer that, we are prepared to do that at any time. I've had a number of conversations with Scott Harrelson about it, who was extremely pleased to have the conversations, but I offer that to the board, if it's your wish, we are ready to accept that at any time.
And while you're here, since he said that, Mr. Chairman, is that an item that we could add to the discussion that we're gonna have on the second?
The 14th?
14th, or whenever.
18th of February?
To discuss the possible transition of letting the sheriff take over animal?
If we're going to do that, that's the desires of this board, I think we also need to note a cost that's gonna be associated. I mean, it's just not the individuals taking over the responsibility, it's also the individual losing responsibility that's gotta be considered as well. So we're gonna need to, you're gonna have to work with that between the three gentlemen. The cost from one to another, and the added cost of what it's gonna cost the sheriff. But if the board wants to put that on the agenda, no problems?
Why not?
That's another item to discuss.
Okay, thank you Sheriff.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
But I, I wanted the sheriff to be able to comment on the animal cruelty investigations and so forth, because that is something that we've advocated, and we're trying to do also to some degree, and, and get up and going, and so I think we are making some progress. I appreciate what Ben doing.
If I could, Mr. Commissioner, what we're finding also with some of these investigations, we are uncovering other things as well, particularly in regards to narcotics, so.
So that gives us a little update on that committee, and, and county manager will get, we'll get together, we haven't had the time, and to present something to you a little bit better worded than what I've worded it, he can do a better job. And Mr. Chairman, I think that's all I got tonight, so thank you, sir.
Sure, we got, we still got time.
Alright, that's it.
We're gonna work more sessions anyway. Plenty of time. Mr. Commissioner Mitchell?
Impressed you remember my name?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to thank the public service servants in the county, and also in our municipalities, who worked so hard to make this holiday season as good as it possibly could be in the wake of a devastating natural event that hit eastern North Carolina. And I think it gets overlooked a lot of times, that the people who were working overtime and on their own holidays, and taking time away from their families, are also people who were themselves impacted by the storm. And this was definitely going beyond, and I wanted to know that it's appreciated, so thank you. And that's all, sir.
Vice Chair?
Only thing I have to report is I have a Highway 17 meeting coming up on the 19th of this month, in Little Washington, and Highway 70 and Smithfield on the 31st.
Mr. Chair, I have one thing I forgot to mention to the public.
You already spoke.
What happened was, DOT had, they have a chance now that in the hollow area on Blaze Road, we are now replacing the old bridge, which has been there for many, many years, and it's very weak. So now they are, they're gonna replace the old bridge with a new bridge between Highway 101 and Goodell School Road. And the beginning was this past Thursday, so it should be finished around, around end of May, depends on the weather. So I did tell some pictures of the old bridge, and when it's finished, I might show people from the old bridge to the new bridge. So it's very, very convenient for cars passing back and forth, now the school bus can go without stopping on one side of, on one side of the water bridge there. So it's so significant that DOT is doing that, and I'm very happy to say that this bridge is closed off, Mr. Sheriff, so make sure nobody go that way, you know? Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for that. If you haven't been down there and seen that bridge, you do, you do not get two-lane traffic going across that bridge.
No, one lane only.
That's, that's well past due.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, let me carry on here. Got a couple of things, I'll move on. Commissioner Jones thought he had a lot of time, he didn't. It's gonna be a little longer. Everybody, if you haven't signed up, if you haven't gotten on the list here, Wednesday at 11:30 is the Federal Reserve briefing at The Flame. It's a once a year, an update for the Federal Reserve of where we're standing, where we're looking at for our funding, so that's gonna take place. Also at 10:30, at The Flame, we've all met, but the community is gonna be introduced to the new economic developer. Who will be there for 101, or meet the community, and if any of the commissioners are gonna be there, wanna be there early, to sit down and talk with him as well. We've discussed it briefly. I'd like to have each of the commissioners, by the first meeting in February, get up with the county manager and provide him any areas of concerns or any issues that you would like to see put on the agenda for the workshop. Now, we had talked about earlier, rules and procedures of looking at that, we know we got the county attorney's report, county attorney looking into that, some changes needs to be done to that, if you have any areas in there as well. We've talked about getting an up, update and brief on where we're standing on our FEMA grants, our costs of what we've paid so far for the storm, anything in general that you wanna talk to him about, anything that you want him to be aware of, that you wanna know or see? that you wanna know or see to get prepared for at the workshop for the upcoming budget. It seems like it's early, but we only got four months, and we're probably gonna start a little bit earlier on this budget. So the budget's probably gonna start sometime late April for some of us, and then for all of us, probably sometime in May. Am I, is that correct? On that. So anything that you wanna bring up, you wanna see, you wanna talk about, to give him time to get it, we'll discuss it. There's more information that gives him time for budget, so he has a, his staff is already working on getting the budget moving. He needs to know some of our feelings and where we're at on this budget and how we wanna proceed and move forward with that.
Mr. Chairman, may I just, I hate to interrupt you, but I had one thing that I think's important that I didn't say at the podium. Last week, the county tax office sent out a form to some citizens in the county. What this form represents, it is a informational request from the county if you had storm damage. And what that form does is it allows the person to describe the damage. One of our appraisers from the tax office will take that form and actually visit that property, and will adjust temporarily the value of the home based on the amount of damage. It'll vary from property to property, just like the normal tax revaluation process versus our evaluation process. But that form is very important to be submitted back to the county, because if it's not, then we, we assume you have no damage, okay? So that form will allow us then to take what you send to us and visit your home and evaluate and to discuss your home with you and take a look at what you have. So there's a short window of opportunity, the form was mailed out last week. It's due back by the end of the month, and then we'll have to rapidly go out and visit all the properties, which could be as high as five thousand different properties. I mean, that's sort of been our number countywide of the amount of damage that we had. And this is everything from, you know, roof shingle damage to two feet of floodwater.
Make sure I understand it, that the public understands that as well. That is only for properties and houses that have not been repaired as of one January of this year.
Correct.
Now, if they've done the work on the thirty-first of December, and the work is completed, and they can't declare that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
All the pending repair work after January first.
Anything else, sir?
No.
Okay. Certain issue of repair. Remember also the thirty-first of January and the first of February, we all got ethics training in Greenville. Two days, I think we've all signed up together there for our ethics training on that. Also, I'd like for you to consider, Jack, give me those dates again for DC.
March second through the sixth.
The second through the sixth of March is the NCA-CC, NC?
NACO.
NACO, NC, NACO Conference in Washington, DC. Take a look at that, the agenda or the breakdown and everything on that, and let the manager know if you're interested in wanting to attend that. And I say that because I don't feel there's many of us that's gonna make the NACO trip in the summertime to Vegas. So this would be a good time to make the NACO trip to locally here to get brought up to speed. We have not, we've only had one commissioner attend the Washington, DC NACO legislative setup since I've been on this board to go.
Been that way for at least the last eight years.
Right. So it would be a good, good time since it's been here.
Sir, I hate to ask you, but the sooner the better on that.
Yeah, that's what I said, as soon as you can, let, you know, take a look at it this week, early next week, so we can get reservations and everything set up, if however many people want to attend and go.
I just like a printout. All, all these are, uh, dates and trips that we are gonna take. I couldn't scratch that fast.
Dana, Dana, take care of you.
John, you'll be all right.
Okay, I think that's all for that. Our next is closed session. The board will request to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen dash eleven, Princesse A three, Attorney-client Pursuit in regards to Kraft in Craven County. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.